Hi again, so we're gonna start the school committee candidates with La Queen Battle.
Do we need a microphone? Or you do want to... okay. All right, good evening, everybody. Hello, again, my name is La Queen Battle. I'm running both for city council here in Cambridge and for school committee because I do believe that our city deserves both transparency as well as a high quality of education. I have been listening to the conversations between former board member Mr. Harding and Ms. Wilson, and they do believe that students do deserve the highest bar of excellence here in Cambridge. And unfortunately, that is not happening, and that is a shame. It is a shame right now that Cambridge only has one public high school in this whole entire city. It is a shame in Cambridge that the graduation rates at CRLS are at an extremely not even competing with the rest of the whole entire state in Massachusetts. It is a shame, and I believe that the school committee needs to have transparency about what is happening with their students and what needs to be done about it. As was, of course, before anything else, before the rest of this meeting, I want to give thanks to all the veterans that have given their lives and duty to this country, as well as to the parents, the caregivers, the aunts, the uncles, as well as the custodial parents and the non-custodial parents that take care of the students here each and every single day here in the city of Cambridge. I am a non-custodial mother. I do have a son, he's 14 years old, and my aunt in Texas does take care of him. My son, he's very brilliant and very talented. He has a nonprofit that helps kids with autism and with students with disabilities. So I do understand what it's like having to deal with students on the spectrum, as was, of course, taking care of teaching students here in the state of Massachusetts. I also was a teacher at New and Public High Schools, working with students and with autism. So I do understand there needs to be transparency as well, understanding the curriculum between parents, teachers, as well as the administration of the particular schools. So again, I understand that it needs to be transparency, the bar needs to be raised in education, and our students deserve the very best and excellence in education, no matter where they're coming from, no matter their religion, no matter their culture, no matter their immigration status, students deserve the best in education, and I believe that this is something that Cambridge can offer. Thank you so much, and have a great day.
Thank you. Next, we have Caroline Hunter.
Good evening, I'm Caroline Hunter. I'm currently on the school committee, and I'm the vice chair of the school committee. I'm a retired educator with more than 34 years in the Cambridge public school system. I've lived in Cambridge for more than 40 years, 45 years, at 23 Rockwell Street in Cambridgeport, and I'm a member of the Cambridgeport Neighborhood Association. As an educator, I am trained as a scientist, worked in Cambridge as a math teacher in the Chapter One program, but also have taught college algebra, have taught mediation to freshman students, and was the assistant principal for five years. In that role and capacity, I have done all the work of a teacher and of an administrator. I've also supervised clerks, teachers, the clerical staff, and paraprofessionals. So I know the work that is required to make a quality education. As a teacher, I was also trained in Princeton Review and taught Princeton Review within the Cambridge School System. I retired after 34 years, and actually, I failed retirement because I came out of retirement to run for school committee. I bring together the knowledge of a parent, of a teacher, and of an educator. I'm also an activist. Many years ago, I worked at a local corporation, discovered that they were making ID cards for South Africa, organized a grassroots boycott that became international and got the corporation out of South Africa. So I bring together educational experience, I bring the work of a committed leader, and I'm also in it to make the specific change. One of my priorities is to make sure that children who are below grade level will reach their grade level, particularly our children at third grade readers. Our greatest job is to teach our children how to read, and we haven't done a good job, particularly for Black and Brown children, for immigrant children, for children with individualized education programs. We have recently committed money to participate in the Karen Map Family Engagement Program and have spent money to send principals, teachers, and parents of color, particularly caregivers, to Harvard to be trained. We would like to see that program with a timeline, as a train-to-train-a-program to move parent engagement from merely involvement to true engagement. I look forward to your number one vote. I want to bring all the experiences as an educator, as a parent, as a former teacher, to serve the children of Cambridge. Vote Caroline Hunter, number one, for Cambridge School Committee. Thank you so much for your time, and thank you CNA for this opportunity.
Thank you. Next, we have Lilly Hafstad.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Lilly Hafstad, and I'm running for Cambridge School Committee. I'm an educator. I have more than 10 years of experience in the college classroom, primarily working with first-year college students. So I work with young people at the end of their K-12 journey. I've been teaching in universities around Boston for the past 10 years, currently at Harvard, where I, until recently, was a member of the Harvard Academic Workers Union. So I am among the many in this group that wants to see Harvard pay its fair share and do more to support our schools in this district. But what I want to talk to you about tonight is my number one priority, and that is our budget. Our budget process in the district is opaque, it is hard to follow, it is not including the critical stakeholders who understand what our students need most, the educators, nor is it including the caregivers, who also know our students the most. And the reason why this is a problem is because we have a large budget, $280 million a year. It is a significant amount of money that we should be able to do a lot with, but right now, we are not doing enough with that money. We are not putting it where it matters most. We are over-investing in market-driven solutions to multi-generational inequities in our schools. And what I mean by that is we are buying too many products rather than investing the money in our educators, who are working with our students on a day-to-day basis. And so I want us to rethink our budget process, for it to be transparent, collaborative, and effective. So we're putting the money where it matters most, in the classrooms, with our educators, working with our students. I want to re-center the human work that is at the center of teaching and learning. I know this as an educator myself. No learning happens if your students do not trust you as an educator. No learning happens if your students do not feel they belong in the classroom. And that is something that I know our district has been working on, by bringing in more culturally relevant curriculum. That's the phrase the district uses. And this is laudable, it's a laudable effort, but we need to go further. We need to return some of the autonomy to our classroom teachers, so they can tailor their curriculum to the students in front of them. And that's what I'm going to fight for. What am I proud of? I'm proud of being up here today, because I'm not running to win. I want to win, but I'm not running out of personal ambition, I'm running to change the system, and I ask for your number one vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Richard Harding.
No money?
No money, doesn't work.
Good evening, everyone, and thanks for coming out today. You could be anywhere in the world today, but you're here with us, and I'm thankful that you are. I'm Richard Harding, I'm running for school committee because I believe that excellence has to be the bar in a public school system that spends as much money as we have, that has the talent and treasure and the support of people like you, who most of you don't even have kids in the school. We have to find excellence, and we can find it by doing a couple things. One is committing to excellent instruction in every classroom. I believe that student achievement has to be, excellent instruction, excuse me, has to be measured by student achievement. While there are other things that come into the classroom and play into a child's education, you have to have a practitioner that understands the children, understands their craft as a teacher, and has high expectations for all of them. I believe that low expectations is where dreams go to die. I think you can find excellence if you look at a budget and look at the pain points and make sure that your pains particular attention to those pain points as a member of the school committee, and setting up policy that makes sense, understanding that that means sometimes closing some programs that have been ineffective for years. I once said on the school committee that Black boys are endangered species, and I got to that conclusion because if you look at the consistent failure of Black boys over the last 10 or 15 years, one thing is true. The Cambridge Public Schools has not been able to educate Black boys as they should, and I believe that's an injustice that we ought to fix. I believe that every student should have a pathway to algebra buyer before the eighth grade. You know why? Because we live in the most innovative square mile in the world, and the reality is that a kid in Mumbai has a better chance of working in Kendal Square than a kid at one of our schools. I believe that with the resources that we have, you can have a public school system that reaches all kids where they're at, no matter what their academic situation is, whether they have an IEP, whether they are an English second learner, whether they're from the projects like me. I understand that all kids can learn, and I'm tired of making excuses for the fact that they don't in the Cambridge Public Schools. We have a school system that where we spend over a quarter billion dollars, right? We have not reached the potential. I stand firm in this commitment to make sure that we, as a school committee, with leaders like me, who want to join this excellent campaign, will make sure the school system moves forward. I don't want to be the head of the teachers' union. I want to be the head of the kids' union, because they're who matters most, and I think that far too many times we're spending time pandering to the working conditions for adults and not spending enough time on the academic results for the kids who we owe it to, to serve justly. I believe that a public education is a civil right. I hope you vote for Richard Harding. If you don't like these things, you should vote for somebody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alexandra Bowers.
Okay. Hello, everyone. I'm Alex Bowers, obviously running for school committee. And I'd just like to thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all, a little louder, to speak with you all. And I introduce myself and how I would approach becoming a member of the school committee. As background, I have twin daughters who are currently sophomores at CRLS. We started in JK at the MLK School, and my kids went through Paws and the Community Charter School of Cambridge, and then ended up at CRLS. I was also the education reporter for the Cambridge Day newspaper for about five years. So I've covered a lot of events that have happened in the school system over that time. So having, you know, coming at it from two different points of view has been very interesting. From our personal experience, our elementary education was fantastic, just caring teachers and a very strong family community. And also, the high school has turned out to be amazing as well, there's just so many opportunities there. But there are things that the community, that the school system can do better. There's the opportunity gap, there's ensuring equitable access to both academics and the associated supports that some students need, examining how policies affect students, and communication and transparency has also been an issue. So one of the major priority for me, if I was elected to the school committee, would be family engagement, because if you can draw families in and have trusted relationships with educators and staff, the students benefit. And one of the heartening things is that the current administration is ramping up family engagement, has sent some staff to a summer program to start jump-starting the process, particularly for a family engagement framework created by Karen Map, which is fantastic, it's great. And as I was talking with a friend about this, this new rollout, she pointed out that in 2014, the district sent people to learn the Karen Map framework, they put money and resources into it, and it was also written into the innovation agenda to strengthen school councils to foster family engagement, and I don't know where that went, because when I went looking for information, it was gone. So what I would do is, 10 seconds left, make sure that initiatives get started, get tracked, and if they succeed, continue, and if they don't, stop them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Elizabeth Hudson.
Just stand right here. Hi, everybody. My name's Elizabeth Hudson. I live on Harvard Street with my three sons. I'm a neuroscientist by training. I moved to Boston to work at an industrial products company. For the past few years, I've been the CTO of a biotech venture capital firm. In my free time, I'm an officer in the Navy Reserve, a mental officer. And for the past couple of years, I've served on the Cambridge School Committee. Let's talk a little bit about our schools and where we are today. If you measure outcomes in terms of student achievement as opposed to in terms of effort, we are doing incredibly poorly. Half of our kids are working below grade level. This is true 20 years ago, 30 years ago, and it's true today. And if you look specifically at families who don't have the ability to supplement education outside of school, it's used low-income families as a proxy, it's even worse, right? Three-quarters of our families, or three-quarters of our low-income students are working below grade level, and we have schools where we have one middle school, where only 6% of kids, low-income kids, are working above grade level, 94% are working below. So why aren't we doing well? Two reasons. First, we neglect the basics. We don't recruit and retain spectacular leadership, and we don't swiftly remove people who don't meet that bar. Second, we tolerate chaos in the classroom, students yelling, screaming, standing on desks, throwing things, hurting others, chaos in which it is impossible to teach and impossible to learn. And every year, third, and most importantly, we promote kids who haven't mastered the material for the grade level they're currently in onto the next higher grade level, regardless of whether or not they're ready. And this creates spans, especially when you get to middle school and high school, you have grade levels where we have a span of seven, five to seven grade levels of ability in a single classroom. The greatest teacher on the planet, with all the resources on the planet, cannot simultaneously reach kids whose ability span five to seven grade levels. It's just impossible. We've created impossible conditions. I have notes so that I hit everything that I want to hit. Second, after ignoring the basics, we try to address these problems with whatever the trendy education policy is at the moment. We don't have time to go into them, but lo and behold, they don't work. They don't work anywhere else, they don't work in Cambridge. We've been doing this for decades, and it's not like they don't work for lack of investment. The city has given us enough money to double our staff when the number of students hasn't changed. We've gone from a student-to-staff ratio of eight to one to four to one, with absolutely no movement in academic, you know, achievement. So what do we need to do? We need to get back to basics. We need to hire, and we need to hire great leadership, fire people who don't meet that bar, and the same bar goes for faculty. We don't have many faculty who don't meet that bar, but we do have some, right? We need to meet students where they are. If you're working at a second-grade level, we need to teach at a second-grade level. If you're working at a 10th-grade level, we need to teach at a 10th-grade level. And we need to, oh, I gotta stop. So we have to meet kids where we are, and we have to hold that standard. That's the most important thing we can do. Thank you, everybody, for your time, I really appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Jessica Getz.
Hi, thank you so much for having us all here tonight. My name is Jess Getz. I am a parent to two upper school students, and they've been in the public school since 2016, and I'm a 14-year resident of Cambridge. I am somebody who really enjoys working hard, and like I said, I'm the parent to two teenagers, so I am well-practiced in humility. And I am not an education policy expert, and I won't pretend to be one, but I am an epidemiologist, so I know a lot about how to use data to find patterns and target interventions. My number one priority for this school committee is good governance. There are many needed improvements and great ideas for our school, but without strong leadership, those hopes and dreams can't be realized. I think of this as, we have a lot of wonderful ingredients, but we don't have a good recipe. Thus, my campaign is pretty much focused on the culture and the processes of the school committee. It has been my experience that the school committee is not accessible, accountable, responsive, or transparent. And just because I like to be concrete, here are two quick examples. So for better responsiveness, the committee could agree upon a statement of expectations that details their obligation to the public in terms of responding to communications. And to achieve transparency, the school committee needs to update their website and keep people updated on what's in the timeline, what's in the pipeline for their work. I also want a school committee that is in alignment with the lived experiences in our schools. And in order to do that, I think school committee members need to be visiting schools, and I think we need teacher union representation at the school committee table. I feel like in Cambridge, we have a lot of conversations about equity, and I believe that a key way to help our school system move towards equity is to make sure that our school committee is accessible for everybody. An accomplishment that I am proud of is that when my, thank you, when my son got to Vassal Lane Upper School, which is now the Darby Vassal Upper School, there was not a school council. And there was a meeting where everyone got to chat with the principal for once a month, and that was a lot of fun, but we're supposed to have democratically-elected school councils. And so I put that together, and we ran it, and now for two years in a row, we have had democratically-elected school council at the Vassal School. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Anne Coburn.
Hey, y'all. My name's Annie Coburn. I'm running for school committee. I'm a professional media maker and enthusiastic agitator, and a parent to two kids in the Cambridge Public School District, one of whom is on an IEP, that's an Individualized Education Plan for Dyslexia. I am so grateful to the Cambridge Public School District for teaching my daughter so well that she could read a speech she wrote to the people who were voting to close down her school, Kennedy Longfellow. I am running because we have had 40-plus years of unequal outcomes. I did, in fact, find the Concerned Black Staff Report of 1985 and 1986, and wow, Vice Chair Hunter, you are right. It's not okay that those things, that this has been breaking down along lines of race and income for years, for decades. I am running because we have great policies and we have ineffective execution, and people are angry. They should be. We should expect more. The kids deserve more than what they've gotten, and I can attest to that after having seen Kennedy Longfellow ignored for years, to the point where closing the school became an inevitability that teachers have talked to, to me, off the record, in order to say, yeah, we were just waiting for that to happen. I want to make sure that our kids on IEPs, Individualized Education Plans, our kids with disabilities, are getting the services recommended by their teachers rather than by the central administration. I want to make sure that our high-needs kids, the kids on IEPs, the English-language learners and kids from low-income backgrounds are never forgotten again, that our city is a sanctuary in fact, as well as in word. And I want to make sure that no kid is prevented from going as fast and as far as possible, and that means investing in our advanced learning program. And because I believe in showing my work, I want to tell you that what I am most proud of is helping the school committee communicate better by publishing the transcripts for this superintendent job process, and I am deeply grateful for all of your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alborz Bejnude.
Hello, everyone. My name's Alborz. I'm originally from East Tennessee. I went and spent a little bit of time in California for school, where on the side I developed introductory computer science and physics classes before moving out to work in biotech in Boston in 2018. There are many things to examine, but I think my number one priority in the Cambridge School System is better connection with the local community. They have a lot of talent, and we do have a base of resources, such as Cambridge School Volunteers, that does an excellent job finding Cambridge and other online resources, but there is, I think, a lack of proactivity in terms of connecting with people who may not be aware of those resources, or may have something to, may not come from a traditional teaching background, but would be very talented at doing something and would be able to contribute in a meaningful way. And so I would like to use my experiences and the connections that I have, both within the university systems and with local groups I have been involved with, to advance that as well as setting up an online platform for better connecting people. One, sort of relatedly, one of the accomplishments that I think I'm most proud of, as a microcosm of this, is a program that we started from scratch, a national science competition for middle and high school students called Science Bowl, that we started from scratch in 2019 over here at MIT. It's grown to be an event that attracts hundreds of volunteers, and student competitors, both locally and from across the country, and we're having our next event next month, if anyone wants to volunteer, and has become, I think, one part of what I would like to hope to create as far as opportunities for more students in the CPS system going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Luisa DePaulo Santos.
Good evening. I'm Luisa DePaulo Santos. For the last two years, I worked as a paraprofessional in the scale program for students on the autism spectrum at the Fletcher Maynard Academy, which, following the closure of the Kennedy Longfellow, is now the highest-needs school in our district. I currently work as a paraprofessional in Somerville Public Schools, making me the only current pre-K-12 public school educator running for school committee. I am also a union organizer, Massachusetts Teachers Association member, and have a master's degree in urban policy and planning with a focus in participatory governance. One of my proudest accomplishments is helping to democratize the Cambridge Education Association by electing new leadership committed to member-driven organizing. Following on a successful series of contract campaigns, I worked with a group of member organizers to build our base of rank-and-file educators across every Cambridge school building, which laid the groundwork for a culture shift within the union. That experience of uniting diverse groups around a common goal is exactly what we need on the school committee. I know how to build the people power necessary to win fully-funded schools, and I'm building a grassroots campaign for school committee to shift power from administrators back to families and educators, which will be my number one priority if I am to be elected. I'll shift policy decision-making power to students, educators, and caregivers by instituting participatory budgeting, giving these frontline stakeholders direct control over a portion of our budget. This is the engine that will redirect millions to student-facing supports like counselors and paras, because the community will finally have the power to demand it. And to ensure accountability, I'll fight for 360-degree evaluations for administrators at all levels. My campaign for school committee is all about one principle: our schools work when the people in them have the power to make them work. You can check out more about my campaign and my platform at LuisaForSchoolCommittee.org. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have David J. Weinstein.
Hi, I'm David Weinstein. Thank you for being here and for hosting. I've lived in Cambridge for 24 years, and I'm a proud Cambridge Public Schools parent of an eighth grader and a 2025 CRLS graduate. My commitment to education begins with my own public school experience. I could see disparities and opportunity in my diverse hometown. I became a teacher and a teacher union member. I taught in public elementary and high schools, and I've spent my career in K-12 and college education, researched policy and teacher leadership at the Harvard Grad School of Education, and guided and grown a 50-state civic education program based at Brandeis University. I know how to connect innovations and ideals with classroom and community realities. We have so much in Cambridge. We do so much, so well, and yet, some children still fall through the cracks and disparities persist. My service on the school committee has been dedicated to solving this contradiction. We must close racial, gender, and economic opportunity gaps so that all of our children have the tools and support they need to reach their full potential and thrive in the classroom and in life. My results: we launched Free Universal Preschool. I co-sponsored the policy that established Algebra One for All in eighth grade. We switched to science-of-reading-based literacy instruction. We lengthened our school day, which had been one of the shortest in the Commonwealth. I sponsored our new advanced learning policy, so we identify and meet the needs of every child, including those who also need academic support. Our equity goals demand that this is not limited to those who advocate for themselves or pay for opportunities outside of school. I'm holding our district leadership accountable for robust family engagement. I continue to speak out against intolerance in our schools, calling out racism, antisemitism, Islamophobia, misogyny, and homophobia. I supported LGBTQIA+ students, faculty, and staff. I will always stand in defense and solidarity with our trans and gender non-conforming students, our Black and Brown students, our immigrant and refugee students, with all of our students. And I use the school committee's tools of policy. I worked with colleagues to update our hate and bias-related incident policy, and just last night, we passed a school committee policy I co-sponsored. and just last night, we passed a school committee policy I co-sponsored that extends protections to our trans and gender nonconforming staff that we already have in place for our students. If we're elected, we can and must efficiently use our wealth of resources to ensure no child falls through the cracks or misses opportunities. I am part of the core team of Cambridge leaders designing our citywide success planning system, which launched last year. I'll continue this work until every child has an adult navigator, connecting them with individualized supports and opportunities so every child can thrive. We've just selected our next superintendent. I'll bring my experience as a teacher, a parent, and a school committee member to this transition. I secured supplementary funding from the state for our middle-school visual and performing arts programs in two school budgets, two state budgets, rather, and will continue to champion the arts in our schools. I'm proud of the Cambridge Public Schools, but I'm not satisfied. I ask you to vote David, number one. Visit votedavidweinstein.com, call or email me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Eugenia Schraha.
Hi, I want to echo Richard and say that it's so moving to see so many people have come out to listen to the candidates. I'm really impressed with you, and just also see two kids and two people knitting. I'm very impressed. I'm Eugenia Schraha. That's Eugenia, just like Eugene, and Schraha rhymes with algebra. I don't know if I said that too fast, but, all right. I'm a former public high school teacher. I taught in the Bronx, and I have two kids here in the schools, first and third grades. And I also have a successful advocacy record, where I worked with parents and had everybody collectively speak out at the right moments. And we were able to add 170 after-school seats to our city-run after-school. My top priority is similar to what some people have mentioned, which is that, unfortunately, Cambridge is part of the trend where the racial education gap is widening, and that needs to be the top priority, is working on how to reverse that alarming trend. So one way to focus on that is to focus on when are procedures and policies really playing at the optics of equity rather than producing those equitable results? And the schools have a habit of allowing the word "equity" to be said, and that's enough, rather than looking at the results at the end. One example is, there's something called grading for equity at the high school level. And as I understand it, that has not resulted in equitable results in the high school level. And so I think forcing the conversation about what do we, what do we keep here? What has been shown to work, and what do we have to cut? Because that's important to be hard-nosed and focus only on the things that are working. One thing that I'm proud of, to go back to the advocacy that I did on after-school, is one of the things we heard from the head of DHSP, who runs the after-schools, is that it wasn't an issue of money, and it wasn't an issue of space, it was just a problem in hiring, which was true. It was actually really hard to hire teachers at that time. And so we realized this is just public information, so we actually called up and found out what is the, what is Cambridge paying for after-school? And then we asked around Somerville, Brookline, Boston, what are they paying? We made a little chart. We sent it to this big list of parents that we had been growing and asked them to speak up to city councils, to city leaders. And after that, the pay did actually go up. So it just shows that that work is not at all glamorous, but that following the weeds gets you where you need to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ja Jing Lee.
Salamat sejahtera. That was Malay, yes, the national language of Malaysia. And yes, I'm a Chinese-born and raised in Malaysia. I'm multilingual, and, but don't worry, I'm not going to greet everyone in other languages to stretch the speech. My name is Ja Jing Lee. I came to Cambridge over 17 years ago after completing my doctoral training in Sweden to continue my work at Harvard Medical School. Since then, Cambridge has become my home. I have two children, one a neurodivergent, and I've navigated the IEP process in Cambridge Public Schools District. My other child is a quick, creative learner. I've also homeschooled for several years, which gave me a close look at how different learning styles can show up in real classrooms. I founded and led a nonprofit focused on mental well-being, and living in five countries, four continents, have shown me what it takes to adapt, to change, and navigating into new system. When elected, my number-one priority will be stronger communication and partnership across all stakeholders, among families, teachers, staff, and the communities. Many challenges we face are not just about policy, but about connection and understanding. I saw this clearly during the Kennedy Longfellow closure. Families, teachers, and staff were anxious. Many carry their own worries. If the district had truly communicated with the community, we might have avoided the frustrations and perhaps the sudden closure of the school. Whether it's controlled choice of the enrollment, the budget, or the curriculum, we need to sit together and truly listen and make the decisions together. Yes, there will be disagreements, and that's okay. Because underneath all those differences, there will be common goal. Through, when we start from the shared purpose of change. I've won many hats, and I've seen that working with people with different perspectives can work together. One thing I'm most proud of is the ability to bring people together and with practical solutions. I'll continue to do this when I get into the office. I'll leave you with these words of Dr. Martin Luther King's: "With this faith, we will be able to heal out of the mountains of despair a stone of hope. Even when challenges feel overwhelming, if we hold on to hope and work together, we can create schools where children feel safe, joyful, and curious. Schools that prepare them to embrace the future with confidence, creativity, and resilience." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jane Hershey.
Thank you, and thank you very much to the Cambridge Port Neighborhood Association for having us all here. I'm Jane Hershey. I am the mom of two girls who've gone through the Cambridge Public Schools, starting in, special start, the Cambridge Public School preschool at age three and graduating from Cambridge Ringe and Latin. I'm a nonprofit director. I founded a nonprofit, City Sprouts School Garden Program, 25 years ago. I led that program for 23 years and stepped down two years ago. And am now working as an interim executive director. I'm working with a, currently with a small nonprofit in Boston, helping them navigate leadership change. So the skills that I will bring to the school committee are the perspective of a mom, of a parent, who's gone through that system, a nonprofit director who's partnered with the schools over a couple of decades and seen them work from the inside. And specifically, a nonprofit that has worked with classroom teachers, working with superintendents, with science coordinators, and with hundreds of classroom teachers to get kids learning outside. A top priority for me, if I'm elected to the Cambridge School Committee, would be helping families navigate special education services. Families who have kids who need special education needs have a tremendously difficult time navigating that system. And I've talked with, I've knocked on a lot of doors as I've been running for school committee, and I can say, across every neighborhood, I've talked with families who've told me stories of how painful and difficult it is to get their children the services that they need. So I would, that would be a top priority for me. One thing I'm really proud of is building school gardens in our Cambridge schools and Boston schools. But even more proud of getting those school gardens built in those schools, I'm proud of having worked with teachers and districts to get kids learning outside, hundreds of kids learning outside over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Arjun Jakumar.
Good evening. My name is Ar, thank you. Does that kind of guess my time? My name is Arjun Jakumar. I'm an attorney, a public servant, the proud father of a Cambridge fourth grader, and the son of immigrants to this country, from India. My priority is combating achievement gaps, as you've heard much tonight. These are the most important thing for this district, and really, for almost every district in the country to work on. But beating achievement gaps means having a deep understanding of the structural forces that produce them: inequality, housing insecurity, food insecurity, differing early education opportunities. It means engaging caregivers and families as partners to bring them into their children's education at every level, and it means treating educators as subject matter experts in education. And you hear regularly from families and educators that they want smaller de facto class sizes and more educators in classrooms, especially in the early grades, to Vice Chair Hunter's point. This can be critical to narrowing achievement gaps and allowing every kid to thrive. I would ensure at least two full-time educators in all CPS classrooms through second grade, so that if kids come to school with skills gaps, as they do, we can get them the coaching and interventions they need to get caught up by third or fourth grade. As for an accomplishment I'm proud of, look, during my time as an attorney at WilmerHale, I did a lot of pro bono work I'm really proud of, particularly with regard to fighting the first Trump administration on things like immigration and government transparency and voting rights. But something that I think demonstrates what I would bring to the school committee is a case I had with the Commonwealth against the Department of Early Education and Care. Massachusetts, as some of you will know, and some of you may not, has extremely high childcare costs, the second-highest in the nation after DC. Low-income families are eligible for subsidized childcare, which is essential. As I just noted, differentials in early ed opportunities are key drivers of achievement gaps. But subsidy recipients need a lot of paperwork to keep their kids in daycare. For example, suppose one parent was no longer in the picture, and you couldn't document their income. You could lose a subsidy, lose childcare, without even getting a hearing. Sometimes the hearing process took years and cost your kid early development, key early development. So we took this on. We filed a lawsuit, but then we worked with the Commonwealth to reform the system and protect access to subsidies, including making sure nobody could be cut off from a subsidy before they got a hearing. I'm proud of that work, first because we helped a lot of families and a lot of kids, but I'm also proud of it because we worked with the government to try to find common ground and work as partners to find solutions. And that's what I'll bring to the school committee.
Thank you. Next, we have Caitlin Dubey.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Dubey, and I am a lifelong educator running for school committee because I know we can have the best schools in the world right here in Cambridge. I am also the parent of a fifth grader at the Baldwin School, where I was the parent co-chair for two years. For my career now, after spending about a decade in the classroom and working as an administrator, I now work as a school designer, curriculum developer, strategic consultant to schools, districts, and nonprofits, thinking about how we actually affect systems change so that we can really move the needle on all of the issues that we continue to talk about over all of the years that these systems changes have not happened. So I think what we can do here in Cambridge in order to create the best schools in the world, or really think about what it means to be a learning organization and a culture that learns. So here's what we can do. We can pilot programs, especially as we rethink our controlled choice. We know that controlled choice isn't doing what it intended to do, and so we really need to think about why that is. We also should do a strategic audit so that we can look at some of the best practices that we're using in some spaces across the district, so we can extend those classroom practices to schools where they are not currently happening. We also should be thinking about leveraging the power of our early childhood programs so that we can close achievement gaps and opportunity gaps upstream before we see the impacts of those achievement and opportunity gaps later on. The other thing that we actually really need to do, and other people have spoken about this, is to have a robust family engagement system. That means that parents and educators are building capacity to work as partners. Some of the other things that we need to do right now in Cambridge are to think about the ways that teachers can be empowered to have autonomy and creativity in their practice. When teachers have the tools that they need, such as small classroom sizes and the ability to teach the students that they have in front of them, we know that that causes educational achievement to grow. So we need to use this new opportunity where we have a new superintendent, a new school committee, and new leadership in the teachers' union to enact all of those things that we know are possible, and we ought to do that for our kids and for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will have Jose Luis Rojas Villarreal, represented by Angelita Mireles.
Hello, I'm speaking for Jose Luis Rojas Villarreal. Good evening, Cambridge Port friends. I'm honored to be represented tonight by my friend Angelita Mireles, who lives in the neighborhood. I'm Jose Luis Rojas Villarreal, and I'm honored to be running for reelection to the Cambridge School Committee. Serving in the committee has been one of the greatest responsibilities of my life. I've worked hard to bring people together, ask tough questions, and make sure our schools are moving forward. As chair of the Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee, I helped create our COVID Health and Safety Manual, getting our most vulnerable students back to the classrooms sooner than many districts. I pushed for a national superintendent search, which just finished this week. And I have supported high school math acceleration so that all students succeed. My commitment to education is personal. My parents in Mexico believed education was the best inheritance they could give me. And that belief opened doors that changed my life. My wife and I have raised our two sons in Cambridge Public Schools, and I want every child here to have the same opportunities. So why am I running for reelection? Because there's still important work to do. I will focus on closing opportunity gaps, supporting our new superintendent, expanding bilingual and experiential learning, and making sure our resources are widely used. We should investigate how artificial intelligence can be used to meet students' needs. I will also keep working to ensure every family feels heard, no matter their background. Friends, none of this work can happen alone. It happens when a community comes together, share ideas, and hold each other accountable. Please consider joining my campaign by volunteering or making a donation. On November 4th, I ask for your number-one vote so that together, we can build a school system where every child thrives. Thank you for your support, your trust, and your partnership. Let's get to work.